No line.
Okay, it's eight oh five.
We're gonna go ahead and call our uh October eighth study session of orders and that's for roll call please.
Yes, Director Brett Echols.
Here.
Vice Secretary Robert Uten, Secretary Arthur Perry.
Here.
Vice President Arlene Schaefer.
Here.
President Mike Schaefer. Thank you.
You, okay. Um, item two ceremonial. That ceremonial matters and presentations and I'm very pleased this morning. To uh let you all know that we have a proclamation. And ceremonial, this is recognizing the second week of October as code enforcement officer appreciation. And I won't bore everybody with all the details except that I will read this part. Be a result, be a further resolve, the Costa Mesa Sanitary District Board of Directors. Further extend appreciation to our code enforcement officer, David Griffin. And to all municipal and special district code enforcement officers for the vital services. They perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. Uh, I personally know, I think we all know how um dedicated David is to his cause and our cause. And we can't thank you enough and would like present you with this part. Congratulations. Second week of October. We have code enforcement officer appreciation here.
Into right in the middle. So I'm gonna have you three big steps forward into the light, step into the light.
Looks like he wants to make a comment though.
And I'm gonna have you all shift to my right, like one step David, there you go. Okay, here we go on here, one, two, and three. And. We go one, two, and three, above the legs, yay. Awesome, thank you so much.
Oh yeah, she can't, oh.
Okay, uh next I have public comments, anyone from the public wishing to speak on items not on the agenda within our jurisdiction. Seeing no one for public comments, we'll go to our items of study. You're up David. Now we gave you all exactly what you got. Thank, thank you.
Oh, press the on button. He can use this one David if he needs.
Again, thank you. Good morning, President Schaefer, member of the board. Very kind of you for the proclamation this morning. I have a few reports this month since we had a cancellation of our study session. Uh, last month, so the first one I'm gonna have is for the month of August. Uh, this report summarizes three major points of uh ordinance enforcement. Covering scavenging graffiti and trash container enforcement. For the month of August. Uh, I saw a number of uh trash containers left in public view. Um, but this is scavenging portion, so I I encountered seven scavengers in the month of August. I'm not sure if you've noticed, but scavengers have gone up. Um, they closed down some encampments uh north of us. And they seem to be filtering, you know, south of Costa Mesa, so. Unfortunately, um I encountered seven individuals in the month of August. And uh trash container enforcement, before I started out, any questions?
Just one, is it the only one area that the scavengers have gone up?
Um, you know, actually, they're they're kind of citywide, so I I wouldn't, I would say no on that.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Good morning, Director.
Thank you.
The month of August, I uh handed out a hundred and seventy-nine violation notices. Um, with the streets listed below and uh the amount of violation notices on that street. Any questions on the month of August? We'll move to September. So the same thing, this report summarizes three major points of enforcement. Covering scavenging graffiti and trash container enforcement. In the month of September, I encountered five scavengers, again, uh very high number. These are all first time, first encounters. Any questions on that as far as scavengers?
That was, that was my next question, or you still seeing, uh still the same repeat offenders or but in this month instead of all new for the most part?
Actually, both months, these are all, you know, first time offenders that I've seen. Um, again, all new faces. Um, everyone's been kind of friendly, uh not too, you know, um. You know, aggressive or upset, so that's been a good thing.
Thank you.
Any other questions or?
Um, do you have any idea where they're taking the recyclable?
So I asked one of the individuals, uh he told me, uh he thought it was Costa Mesa, but it's actually San Ana Harbor and Warner area. And then the other one is in Huntington Beach, the uh Beach and Slater area.
Oh, yeah, that's fine.
Uh Republic, so.
Yeah, right, I, 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 I think I mentioned before, there's a recycling center at the Walmart. Beach and that's Slater, Tower, uh um. I found on the end of the day, I was actually taking some stuff to the Salvation Army drop off on. Brookhurst and Edinger. And when I drove around, you go to the back, there was a recycling center there that was really just. So that's probably the closest.
Yeah, uh this, yeah, this particular individual was, you know, walking, he wasn't on bicycle, so I was surprised they're having to travel that far, but. Uh, then, you know, I I think they're all waiting for that recycling center to open, so.
Sure, at the end of the day.
And then Mirage, they're taking the bottle, candy, bottles and key, you know, and when's it happening?
Yeah, after a lot of people are storing, storing them right now, the lot reopens. Moving on to the trash container enforcement for the month of September, uh handed out a hundred and one violation notices. Uh, September was the month I completed my last month, so uh a little less important, but. Still a hundred and one listed by all the streets in the map at the very end of where I encountered the scavengers. That will conclude for my few months.
Before, before you, before you conclude, oh, um. As we roll, and as the rollout starts this week, I think it's gonna become somewhat busy with car being forced.
And so we already discussed this, you know, we we kind of foresaw this isn't bad, well, and so. I'm gonna be, you know, uh not coming down this hard on people trying to tear apart public view to get through this rollout.
I, I imagine, I mean, you're a new reporter, I think that prevents, I can imagine. People putting their parts out, even though it's not there for the rollout, we're gonna see a huge amount of people putting all their parts out. And I don't, what either you guys, either CNN or us are gonna get calls, but they might park. So I think we need to, I I appreciate what you're saying about maybe backing up a little bit on on what's going on, yes.
Yeah.
That will conclude, thank you very much, or I'm sorry, Director, you can go ahead.
Yeah, the only two calls I got, they're, um, you know, they, they know some of the processes and. Con- concerns and rules, but they're so confused about a lot of it.
Yeah, Marissa can speak more, but I think she uh sent a lot of phone calls yesterday, so again, thank you.
Item number two, a pre-cart rollout.
I can, I can start, yeah, thank you, uh Mr. President, so as you know, yesterday was was the big day. Uh, we were preparing this day for about a year and a half, uh where residents start receiving their uh. Uh, blue lid recycling cart as we transition to the uh source separation collection program. And so I've requested uh Mike Carey from C N R to be here today to give you an update on how the first day went. Uh, this is, yesterday was the first day of many days, uh anticipated the rollout will continue through December thirteenth, so. Uh, Mike, uh can I share how the first day went?
Morning, thank you, President Schaefer, members of the board, um so brief updates, we only have one day under our belt. I went out and met the trucks yesterday during the initial phase of the rollout. Same person, I probably turned it down, I'm gonna turn it off. Yesterday's rollout began at the very end of Wilson Street along uh Canyon and said there's only that area over there. Um, we had, we only had one person calling, uh with a concern that we had removed. All of their mixed waste cars or all of their landowner cars. Um, we were still in the area, popped back over and we ended up finding that residence can and so their neighbors can, so we. It's all that in the field. Um, we did have some people calling in yesterday saying that. They were under the assumption that the entire city was being rolled out on October seventh. But we should look up their address and share the date with them. I think we had one call this morning, which was somebody saying that uh we removed over their, their trash carts and we'll go back out and dissolve that. We had another that had requested a ninety-five gallon cart. Once they got it, they realized they thought it's way too big, so we're gonna try, so we'll give them some more. We did, the average daily delivery is right around six hundred and thirty. Container of homes, residents, um at that rate, we're, this should put us a little ahead of schedule. But it gives us a little wiggle room that if we get hung up somewhere, but six, six thirty a day is about the answer.
Have you heard from or uh talked to your, to your guys on the street, how are they? Have they had the comments about logistics or?
I did, when I called up from yesterday morning, it was probably about eight thirty that I went back and saw that again around two o'clock. Um, they said everything was going smoothly, they had all parts in the truck, I had sent some pictures to Marissa as well. Um, they had all the addresses notated on the parts in chalk and they had a very detailed list of. Who gets what additional containers or if they are switching out the size of their organic parts. Kind of conclude my presentation this time.
You know, I, one day in, the, like I mentioned to you before the meeting, social media has kind of. Okay, I'm talking about the local gossip guy people and stuff like that. Lot of comments from people about being confused about when they're gonna get rolled out. I, I think in retrospect, the only regret that I have is that we didn't tell everybody when their rollout was. And I, I think that would have been a monster task to have to do, but that's the one thing that even. Saturday, there were people that were confused about, well, go ahead and put all my cans out every week. You know, um, that's the only regret that I, so far, that I absolutely didn't tell everybody specifically when their time was.
You know, we could probably sort and go for that Excel list, um, that's what I'm saying. And possibly do an address range or a street name range that could be posted on the. So I don't, I don't know if I can do it.
I don't know, I, I guess, time's gonna tell, the phone calls of people cannot indicate what's going on. I think overall, most people, they put all their cards out every week and they have to roll them back in. Uh, that's unfortunate, obviously, but hopefully most people only have. Two or three carts that they do anyway, so I, I don't know if we're going all that work, but whatever, whatever you think like.
They shouldn't have to be changing their behavior that much, because if you, if you have two mixed waste cars and you only put one out every week, we're gonna take that one, you're still gonna have your extra.
Yeah.
And I appreciate you coming to present to the board day, I, could we get a written report in your Friday updates?
Sure.
Something to this effect, but also the map, maybe our phone calls and just. Cause the, the rise of phone calls will tell us everything we need to know, or hopefully be less. Just some brief report would be awesome.
Definitely.
Thank you.
Anything else from you guys?
I was thinking that maybe next week you should check out the first delivery of the recycling cars, because that's people who know. The cans and bottles and stuff, and something that maybe you think about next year. Yes, sir.
Oh yeah, I mean, that, that's kind of a, I mean, over the, over the rest of this year, you're gonna know which neighborhood they're rolled out. And kind of put some priority on those neighborhoods, I, you can do, I think that's a, a sound way to see what's going on.
May very well increase your airport scavengers as well.
Yes.
Then I was thinking also, it might be safe about they're accelerating their deliveries. So we really can't put out a timetable, if you're gonna be accelerated.
We have the timetable now, um. It does say day by day, we're not going to be on that. And, and uh the, the recycle, literally carts, the recycle carts have been delivered, will they be picked up next week?
Yes. So those neighborhoods that have been rolled out will start getting their third trucks.
Correct.
I'll let you know next week.
Right, I think we have thirty-two thousand residences, so.
Twenty.
Um, so it's gonna take a little while. But it's six hundred and thirty a, a, a day by days a week, that's.
Come on, Bob, you're gonna ask your head.
Yeah, right, come on.
Another question, you have all three trucks, people doing the pickup, right, behind each other.
Not necessarily behind each other, they're not, they, they don't travel in can.
And are you okay in drivers?
We are right now.
Looking for a job.
How hard is it to drive? You get everyone coming out and stopping on the top.
Uh, just a, oh, if I can, a quick report on the town halls, if you were to call for me. Um, I thought they went as well as they expected. Uh, I was amazed at some of the questions, especially on, on what goes in New York and people asking about what goes in the organic start. How many years have we had the organic start? And it, it, it's amazing how people need that reinforcement, right? Uh, I did have a question about the lady Saturday that had ten units. You remember, does she have ten single family units or is it, I assumed it was a ten unit complex, right?
I, I don't know, we, we're, we're gonna go out and visit, yeah.
I'd be curious on that because she opted, obviously they have individual carts for each one of them. And I talked about bins are the same, if you thought about that, uh, I think, I don't know what her thinking. So just a quick update about that, that'd be great, thank you.
I really appreciated the, the one lady that was sitting in front that self confessed early on, that she was really grumpy about it, and then. By the time the presentation, she was happy, said, I'm, I'm not grumpy.
Yeah, she started off, I'm gonna tell you right now, she says, I'm really grumpy about this. You know, I, what was the one, um, the, the lady that brought all the different stuff?
Yes.
And it was the former buyer, she was white.
Oh, was it?
Yeah, and she would call out, she goes, what about, and people were, I don't know if you noticed, the audience was perking up about. This lady pulling out different pieces of.
The Amazon.
The Amaz- that Amazon delivery bag is gonna drive me crazy, that, you, you don't talk about that white one? She says, what do you do with this stuff?
Because it says that it's recyclable.
Yeah, and, and it says right out that this bag is recyclable and Mike to speed her, uh, refuted it real quick, so.
I don't want Bezos to come out and.
I mean, we're still a little east of your range. Any other questions, Scott, bin service, are we getting more customers for us now?
There are, there are, um, I, I don't know how many, but yeah, we are seeing a tick up on, on, on. Residents switching from bins to carts, and we are seeing that, yeah. And so we, we'd have to, then we have to kind of prorate them on, 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 on their fees. And making sure that they're on our tax roll for next, next year, but yeah, we are seeing that.
For percentages, that'll help us.
Sure.
Um, just a, another quick comment about the town halls, you guys did a great job. I mean, absolutely, uh, I was at all four of them, they were, they were smooth, people understood. Uh, Marissa, you and Mike both did a great job explaining in layman's terms, it wasn't complicated. Uh, it wasn't, if it wasn't for Wednesday night's audio visual problems, that was the only issue, but. Uh, just a, a big thank you for doing a great job.
Yeah, I do have some numbers to share with you, so of the four town hall meetings, we had a total of a hundred and sixty-five people attend in person. Uh, we, remember when we had the two town hall meetings here at HQ, we streamed it live, we had twenty-four people watched it live. And then we recorded the, the videos, put it on our website, and today we have a hundred and sixty-five views on those, on those videos, so, so not bad.
It's a really nice job that they've got them, it's a job.
How, how many people attended the town hall?
A total of a hundred and sixty-five, all four meetings, all four towns, it's almost two hundred.
Thank you, I will, will be anxious of your progress or the updates. Okay, uh, let's move to item, your legislative report.
Thank you, Ms. President, this is your quarterly uh legislative report. Uh, first, I'll start off with the, the federal bills and you can see on your staff report, the bills that we're watching on the federal side. Uh, for, with the one hundred and eighteenth Congress and, and as you see, uh, that Congress has not been very productive. Uh, uh, of the bills that we're watching, they passed, the House, the House passed two bills. And the Senate uh passed uh two bills, and the one bill that we're most importantly uh, uh interested in is, is H R seventy-five twenty-five. Uh, that was passed by the House and it's ready for a four vote on the Senate. Uh, this bill, uh, i- if passed by the Senate will uh, have the federal government recognize special districts as, as a local government. And then we can start tapping in some of those uh federal grants, which would be great for us. Um, my understanding, talk, after talking to C S D A, the, the Senate is expected to meet one more time in November, they're calling the lame duck session. And so they're optimistic that uh H R seventy-five twenty-five will be on the floor in November for the Senate to vote on. If they don't meet in November or they don't vote on, on seventy-five twenty-five, the session ends in January third and they gotta start the process all over again. So that means they'll go back to the House for another vote and then to the Senate, so. So C S D A seems to be very optimistic that they can, that the Senate will vote on it in November, we'll just keep our fingers crossed on, on that. Um, the California legislature, their session is over. And as you can see in the staff report, the bills that we're watching and most of those bills that we're watching, uh quite a few of them were passed and signed by the governor. There was a few bills that were vetoed and, and some of the bills, bills that will, will be extended to next year. Uh, but that gives you a little update on, 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 on those bills in the state legislature, so happy to answer any questions we have.
Which ones, which ones were you looking at from the state?
Well, um, again, um, all the bills that we put in here and watched, uh, there was nothing, there was no bills we support or oppose, just these are the, so we were watching and you could see. Um, the ones that we, we, that were, were signed by the governor and once, there was just a few bills that were vetoed by the governor, um, but most were passed.
And I'm just going back to the Fed on a, uh, seventy-five twenty-five, who, who's, uh. Who's supporting, who's the opposition?
I, I don't think there's any opposition to it, it should pass, it, it shouldn't be any opposition.
There's always gotta be someone.
You know, yeah, when it, when it went to the House, I think there was a couple of, uh, 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 represented that, that voted no, but I don't know why, you know.
So there's not like an opposing uh group or?
No, nothing like that, that's why, once you get on the floor, it should pass.
I could see some states that'll have special districts.
Yeah.
They would blow it off or support it, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
But if they don't have it, they just pick out, we'll fight another.
There's no skin, they have no skin in the game, they can either abstain or vote for it, but.
Um, I have a question, I don't remember seeing this one before, but eighty-eight oh five in the state. Uh, disadvantaged communities resurface, any idea what the, I don't know, where are included it? Who's included?
Well, I think in the atta- there's attachments that ascribes the bill more, uh, let me see if I can pull it up real quick. So eight oh five allows State Water Resource Control Board to require a sewer service provider to contract with an approved administrator. And bear out the costs if they are deemed to be inadequate or demonstrate a potential to cause a violation of water quality objectives, pollution, contamination. So, um, I don't know what that means. Yeah, dive a little deeper with that, what that means. No, if it's disadvantaged, it wouldn't, what we do, there are, there are pockets of disadvantaged communities within our district. Um, but, you know, they, they still receive sewer service, I think this is, um, disadvantaged communities that don't have sewer service.
Yeah, that's.
So it doesn't really apply to us.
So all those, all those septic, septic systems that we have in the district are probably not in.
There's only, I believe we only have, I wanna say, three septic tanks, I mean, very, very, very few.
It would be very small communities that just don't have expertise to run their sewage treatment plant. Um, I mean, there's a lot of, it's just like disadvantaged communities with their water supply. They just don't have the staff to work.
Sure, the central valley, there's some farming.
This bill, this bill eight oh five was opposed by C S D A. But it was, it was, and it was supposed, it was opposed by C S D A in um, Ocala, and it was washed by um, O, O C San and Casa.
Should we have the authority over those septic areas?
Do we have authority over them? No, the county is the one that really regulates the, the septic tank, so I just received an email not too long ago. Just reaffirm and tell me septic tanks are in the system, so I mean, it's sponsored by the county.
Any other questions on inside? All right, uh.
I'd like to go back to the briefly, so.
Yes, sir.
Um, did we have any new frequently asked questions? Or, or, are there any frequently asked questions that are predominantly frequently asked? And if so, I think it would be important to, um, change the order of your, um. Frequently asked questions a- and maybe reemphasize, you know, the, the top few.
Sure.
On your website.
Yeah, well.
And, and highlight it, you know, just to give the, the other six. Seven of the community a chance to understand.
Good point, yes, thank you.
I would have thought about what you said about where I live. Because on Thursday, we'll get a trash day, that's when they do all the yards, I mean, you know, it's gonna be a fancy trash day, so just a thought. Maybe we can set a little change.
Any other comment, oral comments, staff, anything else? Appreciate it, and Will and Jern is. Again, celebrate code enforcement, we have.
Yay.
Sorry, there's no K for this.
Or was it a long distance?